I got the thumbs up. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regular B O C C meeting for May 22nd, 2024. Again, welcome to those that are here in the room today, those that may be watching online or reviewing the tape at a later date. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite Bill from Sun Country up to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge. If you could please stand. Thank you, sir. All righty, it's 9:02. Emily, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, first item we have is approval of the agenda. As far as I know, there's no changes. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. We have an agenda. First item we have is the items on consent. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move we approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. All righty. Elected officials and staff reports. Elected officials?
I'll be quick. Susan Murphy, County Assessor. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I just wanted to update you on legislation recently passed and signed. It's Senate Bill 24233. I'm just going to give the 24 because all the rest of the years are very, very confusing. So 24, I just wanted to let the public know that they are going to receive the $55,000 actual reduction for residential properties and commercial properties will receive the[174.87][174.88]$30,000 reduction that they received, kind of mirroring 2023. And the assessment rate for residential property will remain at 6.7% for tax year 2024. And this is payable in '25. So I have not applied this into our database yet because I'm waiting on directions from our Kama software on how we're going to do that this year. So if they're looking in the public database, they can look, see their actual value, and then do a $55,000 reduction. If they need any help or assistance and they want to know how to calculate that, we're happy to help them and just wanted to make that announcement. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Susan. I think because next year is fairly locked, I don't think there's any whisperings of a special session this year. So these should be the numbers for next year, but I expect the legislature's going to continue
Right.
working on the out years again.
Right? Yeah, so we'll see what the initiatives bring in November voting, but we'll see what happens and then that will help us determine what's going to happen in future years. But I'm going to worry about '24 right now. But thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other elected -- Rhonda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Rhonda Braun, Albert Kenny Clerk. Just wanted to let you know, election-wise, we completed our public test of our equipment yesterday and that was successful. We are also hosting an elections town hall on June 13th at 6:30 PM. We'll be getting the flyers out and putting that out everywhere we can for the public to come hear about what we do in elections and ask questions. So ballots will be out June 3rd when most of them are mailed. Our military and Uwakawa, our military and overseas ballots are already out and we're just rocking and rolling.
Quick question. The workshops we had last week with Clear Ballot and Dominion who decided not to attend, did we get the questions out to Dominion that we had asked of Clear Ballot?
We have not, and I'm hoping to get those out today. And then I know Clear Ballot is working on their proposal. They've had a couple of questions and they'll get that to us here pretty soon.
Okay, yeah, so just when those go out, if, just to give them a reasonable amount of time to respond and then based on what we get or don't get back, I think it's probably best we tee up a decision of what direction we're going sooner rather than later, just
Absolutely.
so we can get in the queue for equipment and whatnot if it's changing.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Staff? Tiffany?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Hermes, Finance Director. Just to give you a brief update on the audit, we are continuing to work with Ruben Brown. They've been out to our facilities twice now and will be back again probably the first week of June. We are on track and as of right now, they are not having any concerns of finishing the audit on time and that should be presented in July. We will have probably a material weakness finding for our single audit and that, of course, this year is some of our programs over at Human Services, but until we have a final on that, I won't speak anymore. And then as far as 2025 budget, I presented to you the budget schedule that we do have posted on the website now. One minor change that we are making this year is previously the General Fund would come together and kind of have a group setting where we would discuss everybody's budgets, needs, things like that. This year, we're going to have a workshop with your, with you, the Commissioners, and the department heads are going to present to you their wants and their needs. And I also provided you with an example of what they're going to be providing to you. It'll have their 2020, well, it'll have their 2024 requests that they have been approved along with their 2025. So then you guys will get to see the percentage in the different department areas that have changed and help guide you too to see where the biggest increases have been and hopefully help be able to ask the correct questions.
When was that planned for?
So that will be September 4th.
Okay.
That'll be a special workshop.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think just for those here, since that'll be before the county commissioners, that'll be a public meeting, so if anybody wants to see the budget process from sort of the start, it's already started, but at least have a chance to hear what the different departments are asking for. Anyone's welcome. Mark?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, elected officials, staff, fellow citizens. I'm Mark Detonator, Director of Community and Economic Development for Elbert County Government. Just have one info item to share with you all. So we have a public engagement event coming up for the Water Master Plan Project. As you know, the plan that we're conducting, the county is evaluating basically that big picture of water supplies and the best approach to sustainably manage those supplies. Currently with the project, we're in the draft policy recommendations stage and now it's time to go back out and get public input for this step. We're inviting the public to participate in focus group discussion to review these policy recommendations. The event is next week, Wednesday, May 29th, and there's going to be two different time slots on the same evening. So the first discussion group will go from 5:30 to 7:00, and then the second group would go 7:30 to 9:00 PM. This will be here at the Fairgrounds and Agricultural Building and that address is 95 Ute Avenue, Kiowa, Colorado. The information for this event can be found on the county website. So if you go to the county website, on the main page, look under upcoming events and recent news. It's also on the economic development website in the local paper. It was published, social media channels. Additionally, an invite was sent out to folks that provided an email address at the first public engagement event. So they've, they've been notified and they can certainly participate in this one as well. For next week's event, I just want to make everyone aware that please RSVP for this so you can reserve a spot. There's going to be several different discussion tables with different topics in the room with one person leading each group discussion. If you can't attend in person, there is also an option to review the materials online and also provide feedback online. Any questions?
Just after you go through this, when do you think the final comprehensive water plan will be put together?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Commissioner. We are looking still at a, at a few months out for, for this to, to come, come before you all to, to review and before it goes in its final form.
Yeah, and just for, this is important to us, obviously, but just if people ask why we're not there, we are actually at our summer conference for county commissioners this coming week, so we will wait for the outcome, but.
Yeah, we'll certainly, if folks ask about your presence there, we'll let them know you're at the CCI conference.
All righty. Thank you, Mark.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. I think that covers everybody from staff that's here. Is there anything else, Sean, on the staff side or?
I think that's, that's it, with the exception on this form that she gave you all. This is just an example, so you'll get one from each department that gives you an idea of what they're seeking and who's forward in the budget.
Okay, thank you. All righty, so moving on to citizen public comment. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make comment today? Hello? I think you're familiar with the public comment rules, so.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Gibbels, Elbert County Environmental Alliance, 19656 Wiedemeyer Road. I understand that Don Gray filled you in on the meeting with Robert Kenny. Just a couple of things that stuck with me from that meeting. He said that he wanted us all to feel that we were being dealt with honesty, integrity, and transparency. He also told us that the eastern route that was proposed was never really an option, that it was done just upon your request. We were also told that one of, that you can put back the application with conditions, send it back with conditions, but one of the conditions cannot be to move the route. This is the route. This is what they are going to be doing and nothing that we do or say will change that. So those were just my thoughts on that meeting. Just to give you a quick update on what's been happening in the last two weeks, residents along Kiowa Bennett Road have been contacted by land agents and they are being given what is told is their best and final offer, although we've been told by a couple of them, they haven't negotiated at all. They've been ignoring things on the advice of their attorneys and other residents have said they haven't had any other offers from them. This was the first offer, but it's the best and final. We're also being told that El Paso County residents along the lines are being told that XL will be submitting their application to Elbert County Commissioner, sorry, not Elbert County, El Paso County at the end of May. So that's just an update and we wondered if you had an update for us. Thank you.
Actually, we're getting more information from, from you and your group than anywhere else. I mean, we had heard in last meeting from Don that they anticipated submitting an application in June and construction in September. Those timelines don't kind of jive, but, but we'll keep our eyes open in June and staff is ready if something does appear to, to start their analysis and give feedback within 28 days of receipt. When he offered what conditions we could or could not do, did he happen to mention how we should vote on this or, or should we wait? I think we'll wait until we have a hearing, but thank you. That was rhetorical, but is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to discussion items. The first was really just a broad overview of, of the legislature's activities and there was a lot of activity over the last year or the last 120 days. So the, the session that began in early January ended on May 8th. I believe there were well over 100 bills at the end that just didn't get through the process. The time clock ended and they essentially just die when the, when the session ends, but 705 bills were introduced. As a group of county commissioners ourselves and the rest across the state, we took positions on a, on 128 bills, which of those five that we had opposed were enacted and those were House Bill 1304, which was part of a collection of bills that were supposed to help increase housing in the state, but this one eliminated minimum parking requirements for some types of construction, which for a lot of the communities where you have to move snow, making people park on the street and not having available parking is really a safety issue and that was pushed back on. There was House Bill 1313. That was a bill that overrides local authorities for land use in areas that are served by mass transit. That one doesn't necessarily affect Elbert County, but it's a step in the wrong direction. Essentially, at transit hubs in the metro area, there, the state is, is forcing density of up to 40 homes per acre in, in the areas surrounding those transit, those places, so because they want people to live there and not have cars and take the empty trains to wherever they're going. Senate Bill 24 was a bill that actually put burdens on marketing websites that handle short-term rentals for individual owners, forcing them to collect and remit taxes. Again, it's just they're, the state stepping into a place where they think they can make more money, so they're stepping in. But the result of that will probably be an increase in prices to those that are renting short-term rentals. Let's see, Senate Bill 131, we'll talk about in a little bit later today, but that one would ban the carry of firearms in areas that the state has defined as sensitive, essentially establishing additional gun-free zones. But it did provide for local governments to restore this right through the promulgation of an ordinance and we'll be talking about one for Elbert County today, which would essentially retain the status quo that we have prior to the passage of this bill. That one has gone to the governor. I don't know if it's been signed yet for any of the bills that go to the governor. Unlike at the federal level, if the president just doesn't sign them, they, it's a pocket veto and they just disappear. In Colorado, anything that goes to the governor, if it's not signed within 30 days, is deemed to have been signed and enacted. So you can not sign things, but they still become law. So the governor actually has to veto something to stop it within 30 days. Senate Bill 194, which we opposed, allowed special districts to impose sales tax and those would be additive to sales taxes that counties and municipalities can provide. And again, this just looked like a horribly slippery slope. I mean, everybody, every government needs money, ask them. But our people need money too and it's theirs, but to get to a point where every local district that serves you can be stacking up a sales tax on top of you could get to the point where it just becomes really outrageous. And then others that we did not take a position on as an, as an organization of counties, but were very concerning to, to us and a lot of others were, you know, bills that included allowing schools to hide information about children from their parents. Ones that certainly there were a whole slew that curtailed Second Amendment rights. At one point, there were eight gun bills active. The only one that met a quick demise was one that increased penalties for thefts of firearms. So everything else is targeted at law-abiding citizens and making their rights a little harder to, to achieve. The, I think everybody is familiar that the, the bill that would have required insurance for accidental discharges for every gun owner, that was, that failed and rightfully, rightfully so because there's nobody that carries such an insurance product and I don't think even those that are focused on gun violence, I think, would admit that the injuries from, and deaths from accidental discharge are a small part and probably don't belong lumped in with criminal violence. Very concerning and continuing is over the next three years, about a billion dollars annually that would be Tabor refunds to individuals is being used for other purposes, legal, but probably outside the intent of what the voters wanted when they passed Tabor. So the state has regularly, rather than reducing the income tax rate, when they know they're going to overcollect, they overcollect and then once that money is on hand, they use it for things to redistribute to other, other programs and projects in terms of tax credits to the folks that they select are deserving of tax credits, et cetera, instead of just lowering the taxes when they know they should and not collecting. So it's, it's become kind of a sad game. When Tabor was put into place, 80% of the state budget was restricted by Tabor. We're, we now have about 20% of the state budget that's restricted by Tabor, so and it just keeps moving in that direction, so. Like I said, that's, all of the stuff's available online. I know probably within the next month or two, we'll start getting some, a little better read on how things, those that directly affect the county may have to change some of our internal policies or updates to some of our, our regulations. There were, I think there was a bill that was considered that was in relation to open records requests that began with, it was kind of interesting. It addressed what they termed to be vexatious requesters, people that were just using open records requests as a, what was very clearly just to annoy or delay or tie up staff. It's really hard to determine what's in somebody's head when they're doing something, even though it looks what, clearly like what they're doing. So that piece of that build out, I think there were some other smaller adjustments in terms of, of timelines for response and how governments respond to the press versus an ordinary citizen. More to follow on those, but any questions or comments on that? It was a, it was a big year. I mean, 705 bills, when 100 legislators can only put in five each means 200 other bills were approved on top of that by, by House or Senate leadership or committee leadership, so, and then they clearly did not get to all of them, so anyway, it was fun.
I just echo, thank you, Commissioner Richardson, on that summary and do appreciate all the time you put in keeping track of what's going on downtown to, to keep us up, up to date and informed and to have a voice. But it's, as I've mentioned before, it seems like more and more legislation from Denver comes out as just more and more consolidation of power at the state level and trying to remove it from all levels at local control. And I, we oppose that whenever we can and anticipate we will continue to do so, but thank you for that summary.
So one I did miss that did get changed dramatically and we've talked about a few times in here was Senate Bill, I believe it was 212, that initially would have set state standards for site, where we could, what we could do with setbacks. It would dictate setbacks and citing locations for renewable energy and transmission. That has turned into a study, which will require the, all the counties to turn in what their current regulations are. They'll be reviewed by the Energy Office and a report from the Energy Office will go to the legislature. So it, it feels like it might be just a one-year delay of what was attempted this year, but we are working as a association of counties to insert ourselves into that review and reporting process, so the reasons why they're different from county to county and maybe different within, even within individual counties can be clearly expressed because, again, the, there's a lot of this, folks at the state that don't seem to understand that things are different in every different place in the state, so. Moving on to updates to the fleet management policy. My understanding is we had several departments that presented comment. Those were, those have been integrated into the, the draft policy that was out last time and I think what we'll, we'll do is bring that forward for action with the final version published ahead of time, so folks can look at it. But did you have anything to add?
No, just, we did have that go out to all elected officials and department heads from those we've heard from. We've at least reviewed any recommended changes. We've made quite a few of those and accommodated a great deal of the recommended changes. Really good input from several departments and so I think we're pretty close to the final at this point, so, you know, we should be able to move forward with that at the next department, or excuse me, the next B O C C hearing for sure.
Thank you. Any questions or comment on that? I do appreciate very much those that put in comment. Next item, oh, yes.
Just so the public knows, we have a fleet manager that is to manage all of the county vehicles and he will, that person will be in charge of different procedures. Is that correct?
Right, yeah. Part of the, the nice thing about having a nice new public works building is having additional capacity, lifts, that sort of thing, really able to do a lot more in-house maintenance and repairs and that sort of thing. And we do have a position that coordinates all of that and this policy dovetails nicely with, with having that capacity so that it, it really spells out how we deal with the vehicles of the county, how they're maintained, really spells out all of those, those details so that we have a coherent approach to doing so.
Thanks. Okay, the next, we had, I mentioned it earlier, but it's the first reading of an ordinance to protect the right to carry in sensitive spaces in accordance with Senate Bill 24131. I know this is a, a first reading. It'll be published in the paper, upcoming Ranchland in full and then we'll be picking this up for a, a second reading and potential adoption at our next meeting, but we don't do ordinance as often, but this one I do think is, it's important. I mean, it protects a right that the state continues to try to whittle away. I have a question on a first reading. Do we actually read it or are we just, it's part of the packet and?
It is, it's, it's available. You can choose to go through. I don't believe you actually need to read verbatim the entirety. It does need to be out there and available for the public to review. And then we have put language in there that makes it pretty clear that this deals with health, safety, welfare.
Okay.
But it will be, it'll need to be published, as you mentioned, and then it will be essentially signed upon what's referred to as the second reading, which signed upon what's referred to as the second reading, which would presumably be the next BOCC meeting in two weeks' time.
Yeah, and I was going to say, it's relatively short, and to me, the, the key piece probably that describes what it does is Section 6 interpretation, this ordinance shall be interpreted and construed as to maintain as status quo the ability to carry firearms, which existed prior to the passage and adoption of SB 24-131 within, in and within the incorporated areas of Albert County, Colorado, so essentially just opts us out of, of that bill, but any questions or comments up here, or? No, okay. All righty. Anything from the crowd? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our most complicated item of the day, under action, consideration of the May 8th, 2024 minutes. Would accept a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the May 8th, 2024 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the May 8th minutes and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. All righty, so moving on to board planning, so we will have the second reading of the ordinance we just discussed. If you could, Rhonda, could we get a brief presentation for discussion on ranked choice voting? I know there's some potential ballot measures for and against this year, I think it'd be useful to, to know a little more about that and help the public make an informed decision if something does wind up on the ballot.
And then if it hasn't been mentioned, the vehicle policy?
Yeah, we'll take the vehicle policy.
And I'll give any updates from our voting system vendors.
Oh, thank you. You guys want to add? Okay, well, that gets us going. And we do have one item for land use today, it'll be a consideration of a site development plan for Alpine Ready Mix, it's in the Six Arrow East subdivision up the, up the road here, but until then, it's 9:34, we're in recess, and we'll meet back here at 1:00 PM to look at that site plan. Thanks.